Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, welcome to Monday, June 23rd, City Council Meeting. Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermio. Absent. Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky. Absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 2nd.
All in favor, all opposed? Madam Clerk, I'd like to request the suspension of rules. So...say again? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Under the suspension of rules, I'd like everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Over the past weekend, we lost the true hero in Revere. Rich Sorino is a true gentleman, a patriot. He served the United States Marines in Vietnam, returned home to become a Revere police member for many years. He'll always be remembered as a motorcycle cop here in the city and his decorations on Washington and Malden. Can everyone join me in a moment of silence for Rich? Thank you. While we're under suspension of rules, Madam Clerk, can we take up 25-185?
So, late motion presented by the entire City Council that the mayor and City Council collaborate on memorial to be placed at the corner of Washington Avenue and Malden Street, specifically 661 Washington Ave. This memorial will be in honor of the late Richard Sorino Sr., and the corner will be named Sorino's Corner.
Easiest motion I've ever written, on behalf of all of us. I think there's an island right in the middle that would be beautiful. I'll approve anything for that man, even though he wrote me my first traffic ticket ever, for not yielding to a pedestrian on a crosswalk in front of Revere House of Pizza in my 1988 Plymouth Grand Fury. Thanks for being...Ricky, we miss you, buddy. And he's a legend, and he deserves so much more than this, so, thank you.
Any other councilors?
Good evening, Mr. President, and through you to the members, Richard J. Sorino, on behalf of the Sorino family, 661 Washington Avenue, Revere. Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the members. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Council Order 25-185. I'm gonna wait a moment for Mr. Cantino. I'm glad my friend, Mr. Cantino, is still here. I want to thank the honorable members of the Council for presenting this motion tonight.
Mr. Cantino.
Mr. Cantino.
Mr. Cantino, we're speaking.
We're doing a memorial for my grandfather.
Thank you. Thank you. He's gonna finish, he's gonna not speak, Mr. Cantino, thank you very much.
The more things change, the more they stay the same, Mr. President. I'm here tonight to speak in order of Council Order 25-185. I want to thank the honorable members of the Council for presenting this motion tonight to name the corner of Washington Avenue, Malden Street, in honor of Richard Thomas Sorino Sr., to be designated as Sorino's Corner. On behalf of the Sorino family, I want to express our profound greatness and appreciation to the members of this community and beyond. The overwhelming love and support we have received over the last week is a testament to the man my grandfather was. From the texts, calls, voicemails, and social media comments, to the messages, to the flowers and American flags that were placed along the fence on his Washington Avenue home, to the stories about how he impacted the lives of others in ways we never knew, to the amazing outpouring and supportive helping my grandmother in the face of this loss, through the generosity of donations to the GoFundMe in her honor. All of these have helped to give us strength and some comfort in the face of an unthinkable, unfathomable tragedy. I also want to express our family's thankfulness and appreciation to the first responders who were on scene that day, the Revere Fire Department, and members of the Chelsea, Winthrop, Malden, and Masport Fire Departments, the members of the Revere Police Department, and particularly Officer Anthony Mattos for his kindness and compassion in accompanying us to the hospital, the Red Cross, our mayor, Mayor Keefe, Adrian McGuire, and members of his administration's emergency response team who have provided valuable support to those displaced, the Boston Sparks Association who provided support for our first responders on scene, Mike Zachariah and the team at Action for their efforts in securing the property, and the Washington Avenue, Malden Street neighbors for their concern and prayers as that fire was raging. We are truly blessed to call Revere home. In my decade of working with the city, although I had seen how amazing the people of this community are and how we pulled together in times of tragedy and despair, our family had been fortunate enough to never be on the receiving end of such a traumatic event until last Tuesday. We feel that the community and friends in Revere and beyond collectively have our back, and it means the world to us. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you. My grandfather would have been truly blown away by the outpouring of care, concern, and sadness that is passing, and these circumstances has brought about. He would be honored, humbled, and touched by these tributes, and as his family, he made us proud in life and has continued to make us proud now. For a man who grew up in Revere, who served in the Marines during the Vietnam era, and who had over a 30-year career in law enforcement, we cannot make sense that a house fire in his beloved home is what would ultimately lead to his untimely passing. For nearly 70 years, the Sorino family has called 661 Washington Avenue "home." My grandfather took great pride in his home, as it was his house in which his parents and siblings created many happy memories. It's hard to imagine that corner without his presence. In more recent years, the corner lot and the house has become recognizable around the area as the house with all the inflatables. Papa began the inflatable tradition as a seasonal way to make his younger grandchildren smile, but he ended up finding more joy in them than we did as us kids got older. He loved seeing the smiles and joy that the wacky holiday displays brought to people, members of the public, and his family alike. My grandfather was a good man. He was the best Papa grandson, a grandson or granddaughter could ask for. He was a hard-working family man, a patriot, a public servant, and all-around kind guy. I want to thank all of you for naming, for this proposal to name Sorino's Corner, an amazing tribute and testament to retired Officer Richard T. Sorino Sr., Richie, Dad, and Papa. Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President.
Ricky, real quick, I had the honor of giving this a coin and such to your grandfather as I was the VSO, so I'm sure it didn't make it through the fire. I'd like to present it to you with one on behalf of this Council and Mayor Keefe, if you would accept this, please. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. While under suspension rules, Madam Clerk, can we take up 25-124, please?
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Council McKenna that the City Council move to confirm the appointment of Judith Goslin to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board.
Council McKenna.
I would like to vote, have the Council vote on it tonight, please.
Get out of here. Are you mental? Watch out. Sorry, Mr. President.
Good evening. Good evening, Judith.
Good evening, thank you so much for having me tonight.
Mr. President, may I?
Counselor.
Hi, Judith. I'm the chairman of the Appointments Committee. I'm just sitting in the wrong seat. I should be up there. No, I'm only kidding. Could you just give me a little biography about yourself, please?
Sure. I'm Judy Goslin. I live here in Revere, and I've worked in corporate. I've been with, in high-tech for about 25 years. I did elder care for many years, and I've done a lot of, I've had positions with data analysts and opened up a medical marijuana dispensary back in 2017. And now, I've been in real estate for the last few years, and that kind of brought me to this position. Because of my clients, I do a lot of research for them, be they buyers or sellers, and I had a lot of questions, so I started off at the building department and worked my way, and then I met Tom, and after talking with Tom and coming to some of the presentations here at City Hall, I saw what was going on, and I was intrigued with it. He introduced me to Joe DeGravaleese, and here I am.
Great. Thank you for coming tonight. You sound very qualified, and I just want to say, do a good job for the city.
I'm very much looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? On the recommendation for Judith Goslin to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered. Back to the regular order of business.
Public hearings. Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on a loan order for Phase 16 Construction I&amp;I Capacity Improvement Mass DEP for calendar year '25, construction project number 19086.
Petitioners, proponents?
Good evening, Councilor Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. I am here in support of this loan order to continue our compliance with consent decree and recommend favorable approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Opponents? Anyone here in opposition? Hearing none, closing that side. City councilors. Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We all long for the end of this consent decree. Can't come soon enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, I believe we have two roll calls on this motion. If we can roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $4 million for construction project number 19086, Phase 16 Construction? Councilor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Next up is gonna be the resolution. Shall the City Council approve a resolution relative to Phase 16 Construction Project number 19086? Councilor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered by the Revere City Council to revoke for cause Chapter 148 License Number 221, 870 Broadway, granted June 14th, 1926.
Proponents? Anyone here in favor? Hearing none, closing that side. Opponents? Anyone here against? Hearing none, closing that side. City councilors. Council Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things on this revocation. One, they're not allowed to have two licenses for one location, so, at the end of the day, this is pretty much housekeeping. Also, the license holder, the person responsible for it, has no interest in it, to my understanding. So, I hope we can vote this out favorably. Thank you.
Thank you, any other City councilors? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council revoke Chapter 148 License Number 221 for 870 Broadway, granted on June 14th, 1926? Councilor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 License for 870 Broadway has been revoked. Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the application of 114 Shirley Ave. LLC, 78 Mill Street, Middleton, Mass., requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to raise the existing non-conforming structures and construct a five-story mixed-use development consisting of 78 residential units and two commercial units at 114 Shirley Ave.
Petitioner?
Mr. President, Honorable Counselor Joseph Cotojio, 1 Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicant 114 Shirley Ave. LLC, with this petition before you for a special permit. The Council is probably aware this is a revision of a previously approved, similar application just a couple months back. Additional land has been acquired by the applicant, and they are coming before you with a new plan of similar design. The plans, detailed plans have been submitted initially through site plan review. We are prepared to make a full presentation and answer all questions. Assuming this is going to Subcommittee, we're ready to move on and meet there and make our full presentation at that time, unless there's any questions tonight, which we're obviously happy to answer.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Do we have any proponents? Anyone here in favor? Any proponents? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone here in opposition? Name and record, ma'am. Name and address, please, for the record.
Jan Dumas, 51 Wallonet Ave., Revere. I live on Wallonet Ave. I am adjacent to the building. It is kitty-corner to me. First off, the six-story building is going to cut off sunlight to my apartment on the third floor of 51 Wallonet Ave. Secondly, I'm concerned because there is only going to be two affordable units in this new, I believe, 78-unit building that they are proposing. It's also going to completely cut off sunlight to both 111 and 112 Shirley Ave. They are going to be pretty much up against a wall next door to them, and that is something that, when I spoke to them a few days ago, they really didn't know anything about. It's going to be very large, just right up against the sidewalk, and I don't know really what they're going to do for the community to kind of, you know, help us with, say, water coming off the building. We've got some large buildings in the neighborhood already that, when water comes off, they've got some pushouts that water comes down onto the sidewalk and creates ice, and without seeing any of your new designs, I don't know if we're gonna have that same problem there. It becomes very windy on Shirley Ave. with all of these new buildings. I want to see what you're gonna do about that. And I'd also like to see a little bit more affordable housing. The rents in our neighborhood are going up and up and up. I want to see more affordable housing, especially now that you've taken yet another property on Shirley Ave. You're asking for a much bigger building than you asked for back in April. Yes, I know, I keep coming up here time and time again and asking for affordable housing. But Ward 2 in Shirley Ave. used to be the most affordable neighborhood in Revere, and now it's becoming the most expensive neighborhood in Revere. And yes, I know it's now becoming also the neighborhood that everybody wants to eat in. I've been told that, too. But I would like it to still be the neighborhood that the community gets to live in. So, can you please, now that you've taken another property, give us a few more affordable units, and maybe come and talk to the community a little bit more and tell us what we're getting into? I'm part of an organization, the Revere Community Committee. We would love you to come and talk to us. We can help you talk to the community more and be a partner in the community and tell us what it is that we are getting into. We're really nice people. We don't bite unless you ask nicely, but we want to see what we're getting into, and we want to see what it is we're gonna see. We're about to lose one of our favorite grocery stores. We're about to lose a very nice neighbor, and I really don't want to see another monolith that's gonna cut out the sunshine, or that's going to raise our rents even more in the community, and it's gonna take away affordable housing. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Dumas. Any other opponents? Anyone here against? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Travis Alpert. I'm a member of East Coast International Church, 19 Cooley Street, Revere, Massachusetts. Thank you for having me. I'm interested in seeing your plans, seeing the plans and seeing the proposals, because... Travis? I'm a little tall. I'm very interested in seeing the plans and the proposals. I don't want to propose some, you know, oppose something that could be good for the community, but I'm probably not the only one whose feathers have been ruffled by what just happened in April, you know? Where certain things were teased, nothing, you know, came through. The community was not informed, the community could not show up. I did not appreciate that it was downplayed. Sunlight is a big deal. You know, I've lived somewhere before where I looked out my window and I just saw a wall, and that's like living in a prison, you know? If the plans can be great, and it can be great for the community, then it can be great for the community. But if it cannot, there are so many, there are so many nonprofits that are doing this well, you know? Gateway North, Harbor Light Homes, there's so many people that are doing this well with mixed-income living and doing it sustainably and successfully. We are losing people. I was talking with Council McKenna, and I used to live in Beachmont. I couldn't afford it. My rent went up 50 percent, you know?
So, just so, tonight, where it's gonna be, this is gonna go to zoning, where you'll be able to come and discuss more, but right now, you have to have, you have to either be opposing or positive. So where you're in the middle, I suggest you wait for the zoning meeting, come up to the zoning meeting, see the plans and what is laid out, and this way you can give an informed opinion at that time.
Yeah, I'm opposing the momentum of this, is what I'm opposing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opposition? Anyone else opposing? City councilors? Council Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe Mr. Cotojio could answer this for me. I think back in, when was it, April, like the gentleman said, there had been talks about the Public Arts Commission being based in there. I know that's something we talked about. The gentleman from the commission seemed excited at the prospect of that. Is that something that you've heard anymore about?
I haven't heard any more, either way, on that. This is a revision I actually kind of completed once the prior special permit was issued. I'm now just coming back in. I know it was something that was on the table and discussed. I'm gonna be talking to the ward counselor in preparation for the Subcommittee meeting, so we'll go through all of that, but I do recall that that was something that was discussed and proposed.
Has there been any talk about what the two, what the two businesses will be, or the two...
Not, not more since the last meeting, Counselor.
Okay. And so it went from 50 to 78 units? Is that correct?
Yeah, there was, there's another parcel that had been obtained, and that's why the expansion was, is applied for. And that's why the expansion was, is applied for.
And any chance at additional units, affordable senior housing?
I know we are discussing that with Council Novoselfsky.
Great.
Yes, we are. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the former, you know, the vote we had before was for a smaller unit. And the project was sold to Mario. And he then additionally purchased the building next to a three-family house, which would have been totally enveloped by the two buildings that are there now. So, it works out better for everybody as far as getting rid of that three-story, three-family building. But realize, too, I still have to have a neighborhood meeting, which I always, always have, and let everybody see what's going on, ask questions as they did tonight, and see what's going to happen and see the plans. And they'll be produced at that time. So, I'm looking at the week of July 14th to have the neighborhood meeting. And we'll set that up. I'm not sure which night yet. But we'll work on that and set it up. And then, when the next zoning meeting is in July, I suspect we'll have that at the July meeting. And we'll just move ahead from there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I seem to remember, I understand there's going to be two affordable units there. Was there an additional contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that was discussed?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can answer that.
Okay.
That was with the prior owner. And I get the, Mario made an agreement with him. So, we're going to do the two affordable units for veterans and one affordable straight out. And that additional money was absorbed for that additional...
So, the $20,000 contribution to the affordable housing is now absorbed in a third unit?
Into that third unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? This will be referred to zoning.
Public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Public comment. If you're a Revere resident and you'd like to speak on anything on the agenda, please come up, give your name, address, and the motion you'd like to speak on. You have two minutes. Name, address, and motion, ma'am.
Jan Dumas, 51 Wallenlet Avenue. Hang on a second. I just have to roll it up. It is motion 25, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my glasses up, 25-180, motion presented by Councilor McKenna regarding the reverse 911 call to residents reminding that fireworks are illegal. They are a fire hazard. Can we also remind the Revere Police Department to respond to fireworks calls? I have a lot of difficulty with making fireworks calls to the Revere Police Department. They are, usually complain back to me that it's the Fourth of July and that I should take a sleeping pill and go to sleep. And I know that in the past, we have also had the City Council make motions about clean up of fireworks debris. I know that the bill of rights has a law against search and seizure. But do our police look for, when they find evidence of fireworks debris, do they search for any additional fireworks? Because when I make complaints about fireworks in our neighborhood, and there are a lot of fireworks in our neighborhood, do the police search to find out if there are any additional fireworks? Because I will frequently make multiple fireworks complaints on the same nights. And, yes, I know. I'm watching. I'm good. And usually, they are from the same people. Sometimes you will find people with large amounts of fireworks. And I will make two or three calls in a couple of hours. So, can we ask the police department to do searches when they get fireworks calls? Is that at all possible to add to this? And thank you, Officer McKenna, for doing this reverse call. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dumas.
I mean, I don't know why I just called you Officer.
I was an officer in 1981, so you're on track.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk. So, we're going to suspend the rules, on a suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. We're going to go to order number nine and take up the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report. Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were five items before us last week. The first one was mainly a housekeeping item. It was an ordinance removing outdated language from Title II of the Revised Ordinances. And we looked favorably on that. And I ask for a roll call to look favorably.
Order on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere, removing outdated language from Title II? Councilor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Harramio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you. The second item before us was an ordinance further amending the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to financial impact statements. This was raised to $10,000. We looked favorably on this and I ask for a roll call in the affirmative.
Order on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to financial impact statements? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Harramio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you. The third item, an ordinance further amending Chapter 8.05 of the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to the regulation of vacant buildings. This increased the fines for commercial vacant buildings. We looked favorably on this. And I'd like to call for a roll call in the affirmative.
Order on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to the regulation of vacant buildings? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Harramio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna? Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you. The fourth item before us is an ordinance further amending Chapter 12.20, poles, wires, and cables of the Revere Revised Ordinances. We had a lot of discussion on this and we felt it prudent to leave it in committee. We're going to get some more information on that and seek some help from Grant, excuse us, our policy writer, and come up with a policy that concerns the engineer, letting the ward counselor know when National Grid wants to put a new pole or conduit in their neighborhood. So, we're going to leave this in committee.
So, will the council to leave this in committee? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
The fifth item was an ordinance further amending Appendix C salaries of the Revere Revised Ordinances, which provides for parity salary adjustments in concert with the recently approved Unit A and Unit B collective bargaining agreements. This applies to the exempt employees. We looked favorably on this and I ask for a roll call in the affirmative.
Order on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to parity salary adjustments of Appendix C? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Harramio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna? Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, back to the regular order of business. And if we could take up number eight, 25-159. Roll call.
What do, which item are we taking up?
We go back to number eight, right? Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Up next is the Committee of the Whole report.
In the Committee of the Whole, we had three items, which we took up. They were... Okay, where are they? First was the revolving funds for 2026. That was, it got a favorable approval. And, do we call a roll on it? And we'll call a roll.
Shall the City Council adopt the FY '26 Revolving Funds Table? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Harramio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the revolving funds table for FY '26 has been approved.
We also had a favorable recommendation for the FY '26 water and sewer rates. And if we could have a roll call on that.
Pursuant to Section 13.04.130 of the Revere Revised Ordinances, shall the City Council adopt a water rate schedule effective for billings as of July 1st, 2025? $5.05 per 100 cubic feet for residential property owners and $8.37 per 100 cubic feet for commercial property owners? Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Oh.
No, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Harramio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Councilor Zambudo?
No.
No? Voting no, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Voting yes. The water rates for FY '26 have been adopted.
We also had a communication with a favorable recommendation for the FY '26 budget appropriation.
Mr. President?
Counselor Cogliandro?
May I, if you don't mind?
Yes.
I just want to thank the council. I want to thank all the department heads. We tried something new this year. Really looking forward to feedback on it, ways that we can improve it. So, again, just want to thank everybody for entertaining the new change. And if anyone wants to discuss a different way to do it, open to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. It seemed to go seamless and kudos to you for running a seamless budget process. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, on the favorable recommendation for the FY '26, as passed? Roll call.
Whereas pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 32, the mayor submitted a proposed budget for fiscal year '26 to the City Council on June 2nd, '25. And whereas the City Council held advertised public hearings to consider the proposed budget on June 5th and 10th and any other dates necessary as advertised in the public hearing notice. And whereas upon motion, the City Council accepted the budget as submitted by the mayor after any reductions otherwise separately voted on, if any, there were none. Now, therefore, be it voted by the City Council of the City of Revere, that the City Council of the City of Revere shall adopt and approve the budget for FY '26, the sum of $286,794,909, which some shall be appropriated and raised by taxation and other sources as listed in the approving budget for the City of Revere FY '26 budget appropriation order. Councilor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the FY '26 budget has been adopted, as presented. Calendar item number fourteen, communication from the city auditor requesting that all income derived from energy credits and reimbursements received as part of construction of the new Revere High School be directed and dedicated to the high school stabilization fund.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening. Richard Viskey, twenty-one Broadway, City CFO. Before you is a motion that I recommend approval on, and this is to say that if we get any energy credits while we are constructing the new Revere High School, I'd like to dedicate those energy credits and reimbursements to the high school stabilization account, primarily to fund future debt payments for that school, and I'd recommend approval. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Counselor Hara Mio.
Through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Viskey. You say this is only during construction. Is there, I know that during the design conversations that we had earlier last year, we, we had a conversation about any energy offsets from the building itself, and we asked the, the design firm to consider those. Would that be included under this communication?
Yeah, I'm assuming that this would cover all of the energy reimbursements. I don't know about the ones that would come year over year, but I know that it's estimated that there'd be about five million dollars of energy credits due to the geothermal construction of the high school and, and other credits that were available, and I just wanted to kind of take those revenues and set them aside before they got mixed into the overall budget. So, but we can always amend i- if it does, if there's any additional dedicated revenue sources we'd like to put in that fund.
Is the city planning on doing any tracking of potential energy savings over just building a regular building without the geothermal or the other energy gadgets? I don't know how to explain it.
I would probably defer that to the school building committee and the OPM. I don't want to speak and misinform anybody, but I believe at this point the, the plan is to, they're not allowing gas into that site, so the idea would be to do geothermal, which creates some very large energy credits that we can consider revenue, and that revenue I'd like to dedicate to the high school stabilization fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city councils? No? Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Shall the City Council dedicate one hundred percent of all revenues derived from energy credits and reimbursements received as part of construction of the new Revere High School collected under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter sixty-four L, to the high school stabilization fund established under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section B, effective FY '26, beginning July first of '25, or any other action relative thereto? Counselor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro. Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Grino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved. Calendar item number fifteen, communication from the CFO notifying, notifying the City Council that the retirement board is recommending a three percent COLA increase for retirees effective FY '26.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening. Richard Viskey, CFO, twenty-one Broadway. This is an annual COLA increase that we vote at the retirement board. I, I represent the retirement board as the chairman, and the three percent raise is the maximum raise we can give, and it's subject to notification to the council. I don't necessarily think you have to approve it per se, but happy to have you vote along with the COLA of three percent on the first thirteen thousand, which you'll see in the next motion. We're looking to raise that base to fourteen thousand dollars. But this is just simply to vote the three percent COLA, and we'll come up and talk about the fourteen thousand next.
Thank you. Any city councils? Received and placed on file.
Calendar item number sixteen, communication from the city auditor requesting that the COLA base for all retirees be increased from thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Viskey.
Thank you again. Enclosed with your council packet is a motion to increase the COLA base for all retirees from thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand dollars. This has been something that's been talked about for a while with our seniors. For those who don't know, when we give the COLA base increase, it's only on that first thirteen thousand. So if your pension is fifty thousand dollars, the COLA only goes to the first thirteen thousand, as required by the city ordinance and by Mass. General Law. In order to raise that up to fourteen thousand dollars, we need to bring it before the council for favorable approval. It is estimated that that long-term obligation will result in one-point-seven-million-dollar additional unfunded liability to the pension obligation. We did adopt a policy that gradually increases the COLA base based upon benchmarks. We have hit seventy, seventy percent of our unfunded liability, which triggered the fourteen thousand dollar COLA increase, and for every additional five percent that we are funded, we're proposing that we would raise it fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, with the goal to get to eighteen thousand by the time we're fully funded. So this is the first step, and hopefully what will be many COLA increases for our retirees, and I strongly favor, in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any city councils? Counselor Agenzio.
Thanks. Madam Clerk, could you recuse me from this vote, please?
Should be noted that if any counselors are going to take a vote, if they're in the retirement system, the City of Revere retirement system, you can just say recused during the roll call, okay?
You're not. You're good. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Shall the City Council approve an increase in the COLA base for all retirees from thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand dollars pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-two, Section one oh three J? Counselor Agenzio is recused. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino. Recused. Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio. Is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Recused.
Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the COLA base has been increased to fourteen thousand. Calendar item number seventeen, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from free cash in the amount of one-hundred-forty thousand dollars for the sand sculpting festival.
Mr. Viskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual request in order to help fund the annual sand sculpting festival, and I recommend approval. Thank you.
Any city councils? Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Originally, I had planned to try to cut this from one-hundred-and-forty-thousand to one-hundred thousand. After a discussion with the mayor, I compromised, and I'm only looking to cut it twenty thousand dollars now, so it's a hundred and twenty thousand.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I appreciate the discussion or the heads-up, Counselor, and I, I won't state your views. I think I know why you're, you're suggesting this cut, because of some fundraising sources that they've refused to use. I won't get in the middle of that, but I do want to just let the council know that over the years, the city has used free cash to help stabilize or keep this partnerships event going each year. I think we're at year twenty-one, and, you know, if you go back twenty years, you know, Tom and Mercino and the crew that really started this partnership, the cost to the partnership to run the event for, from a state police standpoint and the, and the DCR standpoint was probably fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. This year, the bill is two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars for the state entity from the partnership. Because of the inability to guarantee paying that two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars, the city has partnered with the partnership and, and the state, and we are offering to pay that whole two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars. The caveat was, we applied for a grant through the Mass. Gaming Commission that was to help pay for public safety and to help subsidize some of the, the fund, the, the, the police, state police detail. We were able to receive a cer- significant amount of money from the Gaming Commission this year, and we haven't, money that we have not received in prior years, and also subsidizing it with the standard free cash appropriation that we've done pretty much every year. And it was even at the height, when money was really flowing with the opera funds, there was up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So with some fiscal responsibility, we're only supporting it with a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and then the additional Gaming Commission revenues to, to pay the entire two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-dollar detail payment, on top of the in-kind contribution that the city does to help support this event. We all know that the event is a fan favorite every year. It attracts, you know, between five-hundred and seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand visitors. It really, it's a boon to the local economy, and of course, it is, it is sim, it is emblematic of what the City of Revere has when it comes to a, you know, the oldest and first public beach. So I do not want it cut, but I understand Counselor Zambudo's reasoning. Again, I'm not asking for you to, to accept it, but I do, I do understand what he's saying, and we have a good relationship. So I'd rather keep it whole, but if he's championing for a twenty thousand dollar cut, all I'll say is, we're going to have to find, we did enter an agreement this year to pay that full price. So the city's going to pay for it. I'll have to find it somewhere else. It's probably, you know, in the net of fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars, depending on the grant shakes up. So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Zambudo. We got a few counselors that would like to speak. Would, are you okay with that before we?
Oh, sure, no, absolutely, and then I'd like a chance to speak again.
Absolutely. Counselor Hara Mio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the member, and actually, through you to Vice President McGuire from the partnership who's here. I just have a few questions, I guess for both. So you, Mr. Mayor, from my understanding from your just, just previous statement, do the city's been subsidizing this in some shape, way, shape, or form in the last few, maybe decade?
Yeah. Correct. So this has been a free cash, cash appropriation for as long as I can remember when I was on the council. Again, it went up as high as a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in straight free cash, and the city does not charge the partnership for its own public safety response when it comes to police and fire.
And so I guess my, my question, which may be happening, it may not be, but I, I see here on, on the partnership's advisory board, there's twenty-three members. Of these twenty-three members, how many are appointed by either the, the city council or the, or the mayor, and is this something that we should, that the partnership would consider, given that clearly we're in partnership with the partnership, and that it might be good for someone from the city to actually be, you know, either appointed by the council, the mayor, or both, to be on this board to, to participate?
So let me say that we, we do that. We collaborate with the mayor that's in. We have a board member that works in the mayor's office. That's Linda De Mayo. We're in, you know, constant contact with the mayor's office as far as, you know, things that we can do better. Does he have any recommendations for us? So we already do do that, I think.
I guess, and, and this is something to take back to your board, but would the partnership be amenable to having a designated, city-appointed, either again, the council, the mayor, or both, member on the partnership, you know, as an extension of? You don't have to answer that now. I guess, yeah, you'd have to bring it to your board.
I'm not a member of the partnership. I can tell you that. It is a year-round board. It's a nonprofit organization, as you can imagine. No one takes a salary. I support them heavily when it comes to just being at their events, promoting them. My wife recently was head of the cheerleading board in the City of Revere for many years. A PTO, PTA mom, recently this year was asking if they needed more support. She has a few friends on the board. She has joined the board as a non-voting member to make sure that there's no conflicts, and she is just a supporting member. So if you see her at the event, she's actually working them for free, selling goods and, and supporting the partnership. Linda, in my office, is a voting member. She has been for probably eight or nine years. Also another member that you see when they have events. Their, their, their volunteer board, you know, like most boards, twenty members. Let's be honest, five of them show up to everything, the other fifteen show up when they can, and every board needs that. I'm not, I'm not discounting their, their abilities, but we all know that it's usually a small core. Counselor Haas, you're on the baseball board. You know what it's like. Three people show up to everything, the other ten show up when they can, and that's the same for the partnership. Adrian shows up for everything. There's a few that are there for everything, and then the few that aren't. But I think that a counselor would probably be great, maybe similar to a non-voting member in a supporting role, just to make sure that to pose no conflicts would probably be a good, a good idea.
Yeah, I, I guess I just bring it up because we're, we're in this, what looks like now longstanding relationship, so it might be good to formalize it a little bit in that, you know, you know, for whatever reason, if anyone on this dais, or even if any mayor has additional questions, they're, they're there, and they're getting, you know, real-time information about what's happening on this, on this, on the board and whatnot. But, you know, again, take, something to take back.
Well, can I say though, our, our bylaws say that no city official can be a voting member, and, you know, to be an advisory member, we have eleven voting, voting members and the rest are advisory members.
Is, and again, this is why I say maybe something to bring back, but do your bylaws have, say anything about an appointment being made by a city official or, or a body?
I mean, we'll have to discuss it, but it's, it's, it's a private, it's a nonprofit board support, help to be supported by the city. I'll have to bring it up to the board. I don't feel strongly that, I mean, we get council support. We're pretty transparent. I, you know, but I'll bring it up.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know where Counselor Hermelo is coming from, but let me say this. I've been involved with the partnership from day one of the sandsculptures. It's in my ward, and I've been, I go down there from day one when the sand is being dropped, and I've been doing this for, what, fifteen, sixteen years?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one now. Yeah, I lose track. I'm having so much fun. But I enjoy going down there. They know I'm there all the time. You know, I usually, you know, talk to counselors when donations come up. If they want to give me the money to give to them, I do that. You know, so I'm involved in almost everything. Not none of the big decisions, but they know I'm there, helping them and watching them and making things happen the right way. So that's the way I feel about that. And as far as the cut is concerned, you know, on the amendment, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mayor Keefe. You mentioned boost the local economy. How much does this event bring to the city, or what do you, what do you, just a?
No, it's, it's definitely a metric that we want to do more to generate actual revenues, but we're a city, and we have a beach. It's a tourist attraction. We have to have attractions to make people want to come here. Outside of the beach, that's obviously a, a great part of it, but we, you know, we wouldn't be a, a beach community without having events. The City of Revere to put on this event of the magnitude, I wouldn't want to do it, all right? So I need the partnership. It's, we all need the partnership to do it. It is a heavy lift. They do events all year long, so they do the, whether it's the Pumpkin Dash, the Winter Wonderland, the kite festival, this, this, this one event is subsidizing the rest of the year for the partnership and the other events. Kids love, the partner, the kite event is a hundred percent free. Kids come, they, they, they give out hundreds of kites. They enjoy it. They get out there and, and, and in the beginning of May, they do, of course, the Pumpkin Dash. Another, that is a registration event, but there's also other free tie-ins to that. But there's definitely a, an, an add to the economy. The restaurants in five-hundred Ocean Ave are packed from Wednesday to Sunday. The hotel is over capacity. As a matter of fact, the hotels now are taking, all the other hotels in the surrounding area are filling up for the tourists and people that are coming to the event. So there's, you know, it's, it's a tough metric, but it definitely, it's definitely a boon to the economy. But it's also, if it was just, if it wasn't money, it's just a great event, and I know our residents, it is a little bit, you know, they, we do complain about the traffic for that weekend, but we also love it and enjoy it, and we, we, we share in the joy with some of the, the traffic misery that we have to endure.
And if I may, the, I'm just curious, the grant, the, the Gaming Commission grant for public safety, would we get that with or without the, the event? So only because we're having the Sandcastle event, we would, we'd be approved of the grant?
Right. So we, Tom and Amelia and the team, they actually went to the Gaming Commission because the, the, the money has, I will say, the public safety cost has risen so much. We all know what it takes to run an event like this, to insulate the environment, to make sure no one gets hurt. There's a lot of staff on, a lot. A lot of state police at ninety dollars an hour. This isn't, you know, this is, this is heavy-duty stuff. So we would not have gotten the money from the Gaming Commission. The Gaming Commission, Revere has not been a very good recipient of the Gaming Commission over years. I'm trying to change that relationship, and we are now actually starting to receive funds. They make us go through a lot of hurdles, but Tom and his team really, really put out a good plan, and I believe they got eighty-nine thousand dollars that we would not be able to use for, we will not be able to use for anything. It's specifically for the sand sculpting festival, and the, the remaining funds are going to be coming out of free cash to help support the event. And the hope says, next year, we can get it again. If we don't, the partnership's going to have to do a little bit, a better job of fundraising. To Counselor Zambudo's point, maybe they should ask from everybody and, and, and change that tune, and I think that they'd come around on that too, but I'm not going to speak for them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Adrian and the rest of the, the Revere Beach Partnership for all the, her, all their hard work getting this together and getting this on the schedule again. I know it was in danger this year. I know you guys worked tirelessly and extremely hard to raise funds and make this happen. So I just wanted to thank you and the rest of the partnership, because I know this, there was a chance that this maybe wasn't going to happen this year, and like I've said before, there's no other event in the city like it. The food trucks, the, the beaches closed. You have Bear Gardens rides. It's a great, it's a great event for young families. People walking dogs, people walking on the beach, riding their bikes, even seniors walking across the street to see it. It's a great event for our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you. Thank you for what you do, Adrian and the city. Twenty-five years ago, we used to, we, we had such a bad reputation that people wouldn't come down to the beach. We had a beautiful beach. It's nice and clean now. We're having events, and last year, I really noticed that there was a lot of families at the sand sculptures. So, you know, people feel safe now to come to Revere. It used to be severe Revere. Now people feel safe. So thank you for what you've done. I know twenty-one years, we've, we have, we have changed the concept of Revere. There's no more bad reputation anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Okay.
Can I just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess I got to do a little history lesson here. I want to first start by saying I'm a big fan of sandcastles, always have been. I've been an ambassador for sandcastles. I soured on their fundraising practice because they forgot where they came from, and they forgot where they came from when we started giving them money to help subsidize it. There was a company, a corporate company, that was supporting them since day one. Somewhere around year seven, eight, nine, I'm not sure what year it was, they were going bankrupt.
Somewhere around year seven, eight, nine, I'm not sure what year it was, they were going bankrupt. They went back to the said company for an extra $10,000 that year. Could you help us out? We're going bankrupt. They did. Then, now I heard there couldn't be any elected officials on the board. I guess maybe not city officials, but state officials could be on the board. Is that correct? Well, one of them, one of them made a suggestion that because this corporate sponsor wasn't to their liking, that they shouldn't accept their money anymore. And they refused to accept the money of a company that gave them probably $150,000 over the years and helped them when they're about to go bankrupt. So last year, I voted completely against this funding. I, I thought that might be harsh, and so this year, I just wanted to cut it a little bit to send a message. And, and the message is that you don't forget where you came from. When people support you, you support them. And, and that's, that's where I'm coming from with this. I know that it's only a $20,000 cut, and it's not a big deal. It's a symbol. That's why I'm putting it forward. Now, the mayor has his reasons for not wanting it, and that's fine. We know we're going to come up with the 20 grand no matter what. We know we're going to pay for public safety. And, and so that's, that's why, I just want to put that out publicly, that I'm not just looking to say something negative about sandcastles because it's a wonderful ambassador for the city. It always has been. And it, people love it, kids love it, and frankly, everywhere I go, I, I work in the state, and people ask about sandcastles at, at the church, at the shrine, and at the shrine every Sunday. When sandcastle's coming, it's, it's an international event, and it's a wonderful thing. So it's, it's not about being negative against sandcastles. I want that. But there is, there's consequences for our actions in life. And that's why I'm trying to put a little consequence in, in for the actions of people who at one point forgot where they came from. Now, I, I understand there's some softening and that people are looking at it differently, and maybe that was a mistake, and I don't know how much of that is true or not. But that's my whole purpose for this thing, and so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, for your honesty. Counselor Swaya.
Okay, I wasn't going to speak, but firstly, I would love to thank Adrian for all the work she's done. I have never seen anybody work as tirelessly as she does. And she really needs to be commended for all the work she does with this Riviera Beach Partnership. Secondly, I was listening to Counselor Hermilio, which kind of took me for a loop. I don't think they need a babysitter, and I think that's what it sounded like when you suggested that somebody from the council be on there to overlook what they're doing. To me, that's, it's just, that's the way he sounded, and I didn't like that. Thirdly, I understood where Counselor Zambudo was coming from until he just said what he said. And I would not take their money either, being a cancer survivor. So I'm sorry, but I have to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Adrian, thank you. Because I've watched since day one of this here. I've watched the event grow from a couple of trucks and trailers and a few tons of sand down there to where it is today. And I think whatever help we give you, I'm going to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. I just want to clarify something through you to the mayor. If we vote this down or vote for a cut, you're going to find the money somewhere else to pay for this. Is that plain and simple?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call on Counselor Zambudo's $20,000 cut?
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from free cash to sandsculpting festival account in the amount of $120,000? Counselor Argenzio.
Madam Clerk, if I vote no, will the 140 come back up?
Excuse me, the 140, so the 120, that's a substitute motion to the motion that's on the floor regarding the...
Thank you for the clarification. No.
Counselor Argenzio voting no. Counselor Cogliandro?
No.
No. Counselor Janino?
No.
No. Counselor Guarino Swaya?
No.
No. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Hermilio?
No.
No. Counselor Kelly?
No.
No. Counselor McKenna?
No.
No. Counselor Novoseltsky?
No.
No. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Silvestri?
No.
No. The substitute motion fails. $140,000 prevails.
Thank you. Thank you, Adrian. Okay.
I know.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call on the $140,000 appropriation for the sandcastles?
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from free cash to sandsculpting festival account in the amount of $140,000? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guarino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hermilio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No. And Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 18, communication from the city auditor relative to the opioid abatement trust fund transfer and FY '26 opioid budget.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening, Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. I am before you this evening to recommend an appropriation from the opioid abatement trust fund in the amount of $143,000. I believe Lauren Buck, the Chief of Health and Human Services, is going to give a presentation on the details of this. It's worth noting that the total amount that she is proposing would be $243,000. However, there are $100,000 left over from prior appropriations from this fund. So we netted that out, and the net appropriation will be 143, but the spending plan will be $243,000, and I recommend favorable approval. And I can defer to Chief Buck on the presentation on how those monies will be spent.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Lauren?
Thank you, Counsel. Lauren Buck, Director of Public Health, 281 Broadway. I'm also here with Nicole Palermo and Karyn Slemi from our SUDY department. We are going to give you a presentation on our five-year spending plan today, and we're going to go through our PowerPoint. You can go to the next slide. So I first wanted to start it with some important numbers, just to kind of set the scene for where we are. The amount of money that Riviera currently has in the opioid abatement fund is $688,000. The amount of money about, the amount of money we'll receive over the next five years is about 1.2 million. And the amount of money that we'll be spending each year, according to our five-year spending plan, is about $243,000. This is a big ramp-up for us in terms of spending, and we are able to do this because we have finally gone through the process of our community assessment, our focus groups, and our opioid abatement working group has been working, which we'll tell you about, to kind of make this spending plan happen. Next slide. Next slide is just a reminder, in order to be as transparent as possible, we have a whole website dedicated to the opioid abatement working group and the opioid abatement funds on our substance use disorder initiatives section of the public health website. It has agenda, meeting minutes posted after every meeting, and then once the spending plan is reviewed and approved by the city council, we'll also have a section on the webpage that outlines this plan. Next slide. Karyn is going to talk about how we got here.
So how did we get here to our five-year spending plan? First, I'd like to say that our opioid abatement working group, we meet, we have been meeting monthly since October of 2023. We conducted the community needs assessment, which included the citywide survey and focus groups, and received input from experts in each topic area. Our opioid abatement working group consists of school resource offices in the public safety sector. We have harm reduction specialists. We have nurse case manager. We have a physician, bereaved family members, a first responder with lived experience, and four other community members, all with lived experience. I just wanted to make that known.
Great. Next slide. And what did we do before we came to you with our plan? We've had the plan reviewed by city and state officials. So we've met with JSI/Cair Mass. They're the state agency who's in charge of working through with municipalities their spending plans. We met with them in April and then again in June of this year. We discussed with our purchasing department and our solicitors' office in June, and we reviewed with the city cabinet in May. We discussed the topics of supplanting, conflict of interests. We discussed our specific program, and we discussed procurement laws. So we have done that before coming to you. And next, Nicole is going to present about the specifics.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nicole Palermo. I'm the clinician for the SUDY office. So overall, our five-year spending plan each year will consist of these three categories that you see right here. So that's harm reduction, which 30% will go to, prevention work, and community engagement, which the other 30% will go to. And the last 40% will go towards housing. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So for the housing category, there'll be $97,000 allotted each year over the next five years. That'll be split up into two subcategories, which will be sober home and detox bed voucher programs. And the other part will go towards a high-intensity housing case manager. Next slide. Thank you. Prevention work and community engagement will be allotted $73,000 each year for the next five years. That'll be split up into three categories. One will be a new youth prevention program, Riviera Adolescent Wellness, which we're working with Riviera Boxing and the Police Activities League on. Another portion will go for financial support to grieving families. And the last portion will go to the continuation of a business outreach program that has already been started this past year, so it'll be the continuation of that program. Next slide. Thank you. And that last category of 30% will be another $73,000. It will go towards harm reduction services. That'll be broken up into two categories as well, and that will be basic needs. And the other category would be street medicine. Next slide. So this kind of just breaks down a little bit more for you guys. You can look into it, you know, yourselves, the numbers, exactly the amount that would be spent each year over the next five years, and what the specific program is. And then if you go back to those previous slides, you can see in more detail the specifics of the programs and how they will be working. This just shows a summary of the fiscal year '26. Spend a chair for you. Next slide, and I'm going to pass it back over to Karyn. So the last slide talks about the impact. With the sober home detox bed voucher program, the $48,500, we will be able to help 16 individuals that will be covered for three months out of a fiscal year in a sober home bed or a detox bed if it needs to be paid for. It's about, costs about $1,000 a month to fund these beds. So if you average it out, it comes to 16 people a year. The next one is the high-intensity case manager. This would be about 12 to 15 hours a week, average rate about $60 to $70 per hour. This, we came up with this high-intensity case manager due to the fact that folks that we have gotten housed from the street into housing have not been able to sustain without guidance or coaching along the way. So we found that that would be impactful. The next is the $50,000 for the RAW program, which is also a matching grant. So they have actually $100,000 for that program. The next one is grief support. It's $10,000. Five families roughly could be given $2,000 towards funeral expenses. The continued business outreach, that was in fiscal year '25. They have done amazing, amazing work in the community. They have trained over 100 local businesses and over 196 staff members in narcane and overdose prevention, and now carry it in their establishments. The next one is basic needs, which is $8,000. That is for things like laundry, IDs, T-passes, basic need stuff that folks with OUD might need when they come visit us. And then the last is street medicine, which is about 10 to 15 hours a week with a contracted physician at about $100 an hour. So I just wanted to also give an update on our fiscal year '25 initiatives, the Nalox boxes that were installed last May. We, to date, we have had 1,508 doses taken out of the boxes, with Topa Shirley being the highest, Utiliza, Joe's Market, second highest, Broadway Dunks, Shirley Ave T-Stop, Beauchamp T-Stop, 437, Riviera Streets, Ari Coolidge Street, Behind Wonderland, convenience store in the corner of Broadway and Hutchinson Street. That is in the order highest to lowest utilized. And our business outreach data, I just told you, but they, we have a group of nurses that are subcontracted through us. They are called Atlantic Hill Nursing and Wellness. They offer staff trainings, narcane kits, and doses with CPR masks, free educational materials to alert the public about, about overdose awareness and narcane administration. So the, and the total number of doses distributed for that outreach has been 224. 68% of all businesses that were outreach'd accepted our training.
If there's any questions, we can try to answer.
Thank you very much. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Guys, thanks so much. I remember when you came up last time, and we talked about the Nalox boxes and specifically about the Joe's Market area and the Shirley Ave area, and it sounds like it's pretty much, there are travel spots all over the city. It doesn't matter if it's Broadway, Riviera Street, but thank you. All I have to say is thank God we do have those, or we'd be looking at a big, big problem in the city. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the business outreach. Karyn, I know you said 68% of the businesses accepted the invitation. And have the other businesses given a reason as to why they haven't accepted it?
Honestly, they have said that everybody in this city who owns a business that they have engaged has been absolutely wonderful to them. They've gotten literally like two hard no's that were like, we're not interested. Everybody else was like, we got to talk to corporate, you know, they had, you know, had to talk to their managers, whatever. So it's kind of been, you know, they're not prying and trying to force them to do anything. So, but out of overall, 68, it's probably higher than that because they said everybody has been wonderful who they've engaged so far.
And it might be like you said, a time thing, they're waiting for their boss to okay.
Exactly.
Corporate officers to give them the okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you. I called you, Lauren. I have a friend, a lifelong friend from Beauchamp who was homeless, and I called you, and he called me, and he told me that you helped him. You called him and helped him. So I want to thank you three for doing that, and I know that you come down Beauchamp Corner a lot and, and address homeless people. I just want to ask you, and this might sound a little rude, but is there any way that you could move the narcin box to Beauchamp Station instead of having it right in the Beauchamp corner there, the square? Because a couple of the, the businesses have called me, and they really don't like it there. So I was just wondering where you're having your highest overdoses in Beauchamp Station. If you could move it down to Beauchamp Station. It's just across the street.
Couple reasons why the location has been moved to that. One, the box started out right across the street from the Beauchamp T. That pole does not belong to the city. It belongs to, I believe, the MBTI. And they, as a policy, do not have, they're not allowed, we're not allowed to have anything on the poles. We moved it to a city pole in the area where there is a lot of, has been historically, a lot of overdoses. Again, the, the area is not a specific sidewalk, a sidewalk, you know. It's a general area, and the general area is the Beauchamp T. So we had to move it to a pole that was city-owned, and that's why it's there.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Haas?
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. I just wanted to find out what, I was curious what's street medicine when I first heard the phrase. the phrase. I figured it was the nalox boxes or something like that, but it's actually work one-on-one with a physician?
So it's a physician that actually goes out with our outreach team to help folks who might need wound cures, they might need antibiotics, they might need Suboxone, or some other type of medically assisted treatment. And so that's what street medicine is, I'm sorry.
And have we had that before, or is that something that's, that will be new for the city?
On a volunteer basis, we've had someone that has gone out, but not.
Not like this.
Not like this, no.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies, thank you very much. When I first saw them there, I was very, very surprised. And I don't have a problem with being there, only once did I hear some of the businesses complain that they were there on either end, because they said, "What it looks, what it looks like is something bad." And it make, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. And they said, "It looks something bad," and they, "Bad," and they didn't want people, they didn't want people to think that Shirley Ave was a drug haven. So, you know, I kind of let it go. They didn't, I haven't complained for a while, so, you know, it's there. I've seen the boxes open. And now, the use that it's been, been made out of it, how do we know it's really being utilized by the people that really need it? Are there, are there ambulance calls on it, police calls on it that would justify them, you know, the boxes being open, people taking out the containers?
So for that, we, I mean, we track the numbers and stuff, so we might not know exactly who's taking it, but we also get the overdose reports from EMS, police, and fire. We don't have exact numbers because we haven't like calculated any percentages yet, but from last year, or 2023 to 2024, and 2024 to 2025, there has been a decrease in overall overdoses and overall fatalities due to opioid use or overdoses. So, I mean, we have that data. It's not exact right now, but eventually we'll get those exact numbers. And as far as the Narcan boxes too, Joanne, I wanted to let you know that when we did have it at the T-Stop, because we do track the numbers, and again, I don't have the exact numbers, but I can get them for you based on the date that we changed the box over to across the street, there wasn't much action across the T-Stop, and I don't know if it's because it's more like open in the public, where across the street it's kind of like parked cars, and you can maybe go in more casually. I don't know what the reason is, but there's definitely been an increase of Narcan taken from the box now that it's been moved. And then Counselor Haas, about the outreach physician, it also helps when we're trying to house people, because a lot of the times the housing providers for these chronically homeless individuals need documentation of some type of mental health disorder, disability, substance use disorder, and they all have different requirements that typically you need your doctor to sign off on it, and where a lot of these people are not going to the doctors on a consistent basis. It would definitely help with some of that paperwork, because trying to get them to track down a doctor, get to the appointment, you know, get that paperwork and get it back to us, it would definitely increase our chances of housing some more chronically homeless individuals in Revere, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Greenoswayah.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you ladies for everything you do. I just have one question. About six months ago, I requested a Narcan stationed to be stationed on Revere Beach at one of the restaurants that they requested. Did you guys ever have a chance to do that?
What restaurant, what restaurant was that again?
Taloom Taqueria. The owner wanted one in her establishment.
Oh, oh, okay, I got you. I was incomprehending. I will have our nurses make sure that they target that.
Thank you.
Establishment for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Guys, thank you for being here. So I have a question. Who takes the Narcan from the box? And the only reason I ask is because I do believe there's a misconception about what these things do. A lot of people complain about them, and I think they think they're going to wake up one morning, and there's going to be a bunch of bodies laying there, or that people are taking this stuff to get high when it does the exact opposite. So if you guys could shed some light on that, that'd be great.
Sure. Narcan, it, it only reverses an opioid withdrawal, opioid overdose. So it does not have any effect on anybody or anything unless you are prone to, you have opiate addiction. That's the only time it's going to affect you. We have put this messaging out to the community, on Revere TV, on our web pages. We have gotten this out as much as humanly possible. So I know that there still are some folks who don't understand what this is all about and what it, the purpose is, but.
I just wanted to give you another opportunity to explain that, because it's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. These boxes, it isn't necessarily that it's for somebody actively overdosing. If somebody wants to go down and get one and have it on their person in case they ever encounter somebody that's overdosing, they'll have it with them. So it's for the public to have, and.
That was the whole purpose and point, was so that everybody has access to this. Everybody carries it on them like you would carry an EpiPen or, you know, some other lifesaving, you know, measures. And more and more people are understanding what this is all about and what's happening out there, and more and more people want to have it on them. If I see somebody on the sidewalk, or if I see somebody on the train, you know, I want to be able to help, and this is a way you can help. So yes, more and more people, this isn't about what ward has the most overdoses, or what part of the city is the worst. It's not about that. It's about just keeping people safe. It doesn't matter where they are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Permission to speak from the chair?
Just wanted to congratulate you guys. This is great work. Keeping us informed on this information is highly important, getting the information out. One of my comments was going to be about Taloom, because they had reached out as well. So I think that's awesome that businesses are looking out for, for the resource as well. And I just wanted to commend you all, so great job. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Shall the City Council approve an appropriation from the opioid abatement trust fund to fund the opioid abatement program in the amount of $143,000? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Greenoswayah?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haremio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 19, communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to minor corrections to the accessory dwelling unit zoning ordinance.
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Tom Skrowski, 201 Broadway. I wasn't going to come up and speak, I felt like the letter spoke for itself. There's a few minor edits. Happy to answer any other questions as you have them.
If we have any questions, this is going to be ordered to a public hearing.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 20, communication from the CFO requesting a public hearing to amend Appendix A, Table of Fees of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere.
CFO? No. Any counselors? Nope. Okay, this will also be ordered to a public hearing July 25th.
Motions. Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request constituent services to issue a reverse 911 call to all residents, reminding them that fireworks are illegal, are a fire hazard due to the close proximity of homes in the city, and negatively impact individuals with certain medical conditions and pets.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Veterans and pets are vulnerable from the noise of fireworks. An old neighborhood like Beauchamp is also vulnerable if a rocket firework lands on a rooftop. I've witnessed not too long ago, six houses going up on, up on fire when a woman threw a cigarette near a wooden porch. Fireworks are just as dangerous and deadly. I would like, I would like the city to do their part and try to curb fireworks in the city. I am asking for a robo-call for all residents in Revere on July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counselor Greenoswayah that the mayor request the traffic commission to consider establishing a traffic commission regulation limiting the number of residential parking permits issued per address or unit to four, with the stipulation that residents may apply for additional parking permits through an appeal process and annual fee to be administered by the parking department.
Counselor Greenoswayah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Right now in Revere, there are no real limits on how many residential parking permits can be issued per address. Residents can receive up to 10 per unit, whether it's a single-family home or multi-family building. This lack of regulation is creating serious parking problems across the city, leaving neighbors with limited options and increased tensions on our streets. My motion asks the mayor to request the traffic commission to consider establishing a regulation to cap the number of permits at four per unit. Households that require more than four would still be able to apply for additional permit through an appeals process, ensuring that special circumstances are accommodated, such as if someone has four children and they all drive now, and they also have a vehicle. We're also, I'm also proposing the option of a modest annual fee for any permits beyond the cap to help manage the demand for support enforcement. This motion is not about punishment, it's about creating a fair, balanced, and sustainable system. Cities like Somerville, Cambridge, and Boston already limit the number of parking permits issued by households and have annual fees in place. Revere needs to join them by modernizing our approach to residential parking. Our streets are a shared public resource, and it's time that we manage them responsibly for the good of all the residents in the City of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Haremio.
Mr. President, through you to Counselwoman Greenoswayah. I really appreciate the intent and, and the thoughtfulness put behind this motion. I think it's a, it's a great, I think it's a great, it has a really good intent, so really appreciate you putting this on.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor McKenna. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I appreciate the thought process on this, and I do think we have an issue with 10 cars per household. I would really like to put this into subcommittee and discuss it further. I just, I don't, I don't know about four. Maybe we talk about more, more specifically on the type of house or the type of apartment or something, and then the fee thing kind of bothers me too. I under, like I said, I understand the logic, and I don't think this is bad at all. I think we can really find a way to, to make this work. And at some point, we should talk about the resident parking program as well. So, but I, I would, I would like to put this into, I don't even know what subcommittee would want to take this. But that's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Okay, this will go to public safety. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the City Council file with the Zoning Board of Appeals an appeal of the decision of the building inspector to issue building permit number B25000401 to 22 Naples Road on June 12th of '25, contesting that the building permit for the canopy is in violation of Condition Number Four of the special permit. There shall be an unobstructed 20-foot fire lane provided along both sides and rear of the building of special permit C2103 awarded by the City Council on March 8th, 2021, for the operation of a commercial garage.
Counselor Keanu, Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a lot to unpack here, so my apologies in advance. September 24th, 2024, I received a phone call that there was building going on in between 16 and 22 Naples Road, and at the time, I didn't know who was doing what. I looked up permits on file, there were none. I drove by, there's steel being erected in between those two buildings. The building department went down, stopped the building, and since then, we've been going through some disagreements on whether it's okay for them to build there. And I want to read some things into the record tonight. March 8th, 2021, this council, not this specific one, but the council, the previous council, they approved a special permit with nine conditions. Currently, that property is still, still in violation of four of them. Number four, there shall be an unobstructed 20-foot fire lane provided along both sides and rear of the building. Okay, unobstructed. Right now, they would just approved a permit for a canopy. If you look up CMR 780, canopy materials require rigid framework. You have to really do something crazy to knock that, that style framework down. Now, it's been said, the, the, the fire inspector, Cheever, he says it's okay, and I will, I cannot get an answer from him on why he thinks he can approve this when this violates this condition of the special permit. I also can't get an answer from the building commissioner, who says that this is the fire inspector's fault, and that's why he signed the permit. I'm getting the runaround. I asked the solicitor for a legal opinion last Tuesday. I've gotten nothing. Nobody seems to want to talk to this, about this, and I have been trying since September to keep it out of this, this chamber and keep it out of the public eye, because this nonsense should not be going on. Now, I just read one of the conditions that he's violating. Right now, would you be shocked to know that there is now a fence blocking access to that fire lane? There is also a giant truck in between these two buildings. You're not supposed to have anything in a fire lane. It's supposed to be unobstructed. You're building a canopy? Why? Keeping the ground dry? I don't know. Unfortunately, none of us have standing to file this appeal. It has to be in the butter, and I know that that process is starting tomorrow. What I'd like to do is change this motion to something that we can do. I'd like to put a motion on the floor and withdraw this one. Through you, Mr. President, to a clerk. That the City Council order to a public hearing the revocation of Chapter 148 License Number 651 for 22 Naples Road granted January 24th, 2022, for cause. Cause being, they have not met the special conditions of their special permit, and they are currently violating four of them. Number four, there shall be an unobstructed 20-foot fire lane. We already read that one. Number five, there shall be no outdoor storage of materials, equipment, or junked cars. That's a violation. The parking lot spaces in the rear of the building shall be appropriately marked in stripes. Not happened. A landscaping planter shall be constructed against the front of the building to separate, separate the parking spaces from the building. The landscaping planter shall include ornamental grasses and, or evergreens. Has not happened. I'm sorry, it's been over four years. And if the building commissioner and the fire inspector think it's okay to allow a permit that directly violates at least one of these conditions, I am beside myself that I have not been able to get a straight answer from anybody. Enough is enough, and I fear, I fear if I pull back other special permits in this city, what I might find. We should do an audit. We should do an audit of the special permits to ensure that these conditions set by this body, set by the Zoning Board of Appeals, when you get a variance approved, when you get a special permit approved, they become part of the zoning. The building commissioner's job is to enforce zoning. They have the final say. I'm getting the runaround, I'm tired of it, I did not want to bring it here, and I also want to thank Mayor Keefe, who is the only person who tried to get all the, the people that are involved in this into a room to talk about it, and it has not happened. I've asked people to send emails. I've asked people to revoke the permit. I've asked for a legal review. I've gotten nothing. I've gone, "Well, it's their fault." Well, it's their fault. Enough is enough. I'm asking the council to. I'm asking the council to support this motion tonight, it will send this to a public hearing, where we can have a discussion with all the people involved. We have the butter here, hopefully the business owner shows up, because if, I want to give this person a chance to comply with these conditions, this is nothing personal. I've been dealing with this for nine months. Nine months. So I would like to take a roll call for the revocation of this Chapter 148 license and push it to a special hearing.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk. You did a very good job.
I saw Counselor Kelly nodding her head over there with the zoning stuff. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
I feel your pain, because I'm getting some of the same issues with the Popeyes at 340 Squire Road.
Let's peel it back.
And I have been doing the same thing with trying to get answers for constituents. Almost, I think we're over three years, or at three years as well, for the special permit, so I totally agree with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk.
On Counselor Cogliandro's verbal motion to order to a public hearing the license revocation for, the Chapter 148 license revocation for 22 Naples Road, Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Greenoswayah?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haremio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the matter will be ordered to a public hearing. And for the record, Council Order 25182 is withdrawn by, was that?
Withdrawn, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 25, Motion Presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor request the DPW to install an additional "do not block intersection" sign and paint a "do not block the box" at the intersection of Rosetti Street and Broadway.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, Motion Presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor request the Chief of Police to increase enforcement of the intersection of Rosetti Street and Broadway.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
No further business, Counsel President.
No further business. Everyone have a safe and happy Fourth of July, and we will see you on July 25.